Call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, June 6, 2022. We'll record the attendance. All are present with the exception of Member Angle, who is excused. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Let's move on to Article Three, approve the current agenda. Do I hear any?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member Rissy, support by Member Deering. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Moving on, Article Four, disclose any conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest that they wish to disclose?
I should probably mention that I'm quite good friends with Albright's.
Okay.
I happen to know them as well, but I don't think that that's a conflict related to the issue.
Do either of you see a conflict as it relates to the issue? Does anybody else have any concerns with Member Deering or Member Rissy's perceived conflicts?
No, I have no financial transactions between them.
Thank you for disclosing that hearing. None will move forward. Moving on to Article Five, approve the minutes of May 9, 2022 meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2022 meeting.
Motion made by Member Deering, supported by Member.
Those four. Here.
Member Roland, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None will move forward.
I'd just like to abstain since I wasn't here.
So for the record, Member Rappin and Member Corsage abstained from the last vote because they were not here. Article Six, acknowledge any visitors or those wishing to speak. We do have a public hearing for the Albright's, so you can speak when that comes up. Do we have anybody that called in, Jessica? All right, it's a quiet night. Awesome. Let's move on to Article Seven, case number 223708 Albright. Brian?
All right, so here the applicant's requesting a type one special use permit to allow for a taller fence in the front yard area. So the township standard for front yard fences is a height of four feet, and the applicant is requesting a six-foot tall fence. They're making this request because they have a through lot, so they technically have two front yard areas. Both the yard facing the service drive on the west and the yard facing Cascade Road on the east are considered front yard areas per the zoning ordinance. The property owner also recently received a variance to allow for a pool in the front yard area facing the service drive. So they'd like to add a six-foot tall privacy fence around that area. So the taller fence would be located along a portion of the service drive along the west property line and then extend up the entire south property line. During a site visit, it was noted that there is some existing approximately six-foot tall fence between the house and Cascade Road. I measured a portion of that and it was approximately six foot one inches tall there. The applicant indicated they like to keep that fence, so the special use permit would include that existing fence on the site as well. So in the staff report, I have listed the standards that must be met to allow for a fence that exceeds four feet in height. And at the same, the applicant appears to meet those standards for a taller fence, so I'm recommending approval of the six-foot tall fence in the front yard as requested.
Any questions for Brian? Hearing none. Would the applicant like to come forward? You could, just for the record, state your name and address.
Andrew Albright, 2970 Thorncrest Drive, Southeast, and Kate Albright.
Kate, okay.
I don't have any other. Brian does a good job.
You're putting in a fence and you're putting in a pool.
Yep, that's about it.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
The only question I have is, I know he, I was looking at a different map, I guess. Is it going all the way around into your, your backyard? Or is it just going in the front around the pool area?
It will go, it will extend basically from the corner of our driveway to the corner of the property. I guess it's in the south.
You can point on that piece of paper and we can see it.
So it'll go from here to here, and then it will extend up to the Cascade Road.
Okay.
Portion of the lot. And it'll kind of, it'll be about 10 feet apart from the existing one we have that goes from the driveway pad up towards Cascade Road. And that one's attached to a chain link fence that's already there.
Just curious, have you received any feedback or questions or concern from any neighbors?
No, not that we've heard, and I think the letter went out to these ones again.
Yep.
Following our pool and the pool one was accepted and I think this one out for the fence.
No correspondence or anything back?
No, I haven't received anything for this one. We received two letters of support for the pool variance, but haven't received anything for the fence.
So you're not planning anything in, in this area, like around in here?
No.
Connect. You're not trying to box in the pool?
No, no. It does sit higher than the 48 inches for the safety and don't have to have the fence around it because of the 48 inch height.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Was it just a wood fence?
Yeah, wood dog-eared, yeah, pre-stained. We have a fence company that's going to put the supports and cross members up, and then we're going to do the fence ourselves.
Awesome.
You don't have to paint it.
You don't have to paint it.
No, no.
Paint other things. I would make a motion that we go to.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing.
Here a motion for Member Rissy to go to public hearing. Support, support from Member Moxley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We'll go to public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this matter? Is there anybody? No, Jessica says there's nobody out there.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Motion made by Member Rissy, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Go on, and does anybody want to take a crack at this?
Just, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, you can do both.
Do we have? Do we have a ordinance? Does, does the ordinance read that the fence has to be, you know, the cross members have to be on the inside of the fence?
Correct. All supports have to be on the inside of the fence facing the property owner.
Okay.
With that, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to for case number 22-3708 Albright to approve the six-foot fence as, as requested.
Who had that first? Member Corsage. All right, so Member Rissy made the motion, Member Corsage supported it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have several subcommittees that are going to give reports. Ralph, I'm sure we'll have an update on his, because he's studios and detailed like that. All right, so let's go to update on the composting committee article eight and review the draft ordinance amendment.
Think you're gonna go first? Yeah, I'll just give a brief kind of intro to that. So the composting use subcommittee was formed and we held a total of four meetings in April and May with staff and legal counsel present at all those meetings. To come up with this draft ordinance amendment, and just a quick summary of that is that the amendments would allow commercial composting as a special use permit in the arc, farmland preservation and industrial zoning districts subject to the design standards that you then see included in your packet there. So this time we're asking the planning commission to review those amendments and see if we have any comments or be prepared to discuss those.
And then if I, if I could, I'd like to add a few things. You know, we, we looked at this from several different perspectives, I guess, and, and the information that we received from Wormies as well as the state, I think really helped us craft where we're at now. And I think there was a consensus that we all had a much more welcoming view of this after reviewing that information and from the presentation that was, that was made to us at that, at that last planning commission meeting. So with that though, we, we did come back with the special use, our recommendation to the planning commission includes 15 conditions, which is significantly higher than our average special use. So we're not giving away the farm here, no pun intended. And we also have some larger parcel size requirements. I think it's a minimum of 10 acres. We have some buffers and setbacks that we can talk about tonight that, that we proposed, but I think the idea behind those is that those are more strict in the farmland preservation and the agricultural rule, kind of the arc category of zoning than they are in, in industrial district. And so I don't want people to get confused because obviously in the industrial district, we're less restrictive with this use as we would be in a more residential area. So that's, you know, we're allowing for it in that, in that farm area, but we're saying, hey, if you want to do this on a two-acre parcel, then you need to go to where it's industrial. And then we put some further limitations on hours of operation. We added annual reviews to the planning commission. So if somebody moves forward with this, they would come in front of us for, you know, a year or two or three. At some point, the planning commission could say, hey, you know what? You've been dotting all your i's and crossing your t's. You don't need to come see us anymore. And, and they could take a vacation as long as they continue to follow the rules. So I mean, that, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing as a committee. That's just a little tidbit of what we had. We had some other things in there about the sorting of waste. And if you're throwing away so much waste, then that triggers a point where that needs to happen offsite and in an industrial or another's, you know, zoning other than this zoning, because we're not trying to get into trash sorting. So I, I think we, you know, you try to think of everything you can think of with these things that could possibly come up. And, and we had a lot of information provided to us, so that really helped. But, you know, we tried to be as comprehensive as possible, not too restrictive to same time, so.
Even down to the types of worms.
Oh, yeah. We didn't want to, invasive worms.
No Asian jumping worm.
No Asian jumping worm. That's right. I know.
If those in my yards, nobody wants those.
I thought number seven was, I really appreciated that. And Brian, I don't know how we're going to, you know, something for you to think about now that you are the planning director and, you know, how do we enforce that? How do we ensure that they're, they're hitting that mark and making appearances? So, you know, just a point of consideration, but I really do like that, that we're doing that. And I think as we look at other special uses, it's a good way to drive compliance because I think that has been an issue previously.
I think that particular note flows well into the other subcommittee for correcting and comments and appointments and reminders for things like that.
Yeah.
Yes, Member Roland. Do we have something in here that's, I mean, you, and I'm just paraphrasing, right? The five years you go on vacation, you're good. You don't ever have to come back. Do we have something where they may not have to come back, but we go out there, we have an inspector that goes out every two or three years to just make sure they're being compliant once they're on vacation. And I'm just using here.
So that number seven there does allow the planning commission or the township to request that they come back for a review. So for example, either whether we're out there, see a problem, or if we get a complaint from a neighbor, 10 years down the road, the.
We don't go out and spot check or anything. We don't go out and do inspections.
We have, yeah.
Come, sorry, if they're told to come back in 10 years, they need to keep all their logs and bring them back to show all of the years of compliance as well. So it's not like they're completely free to go afterwards.
How do they show the compliance? I mean, do they just, I mean, just write it down in a logbook? I mean. Samples of the worm, right? I mean, like, that's my point is, you know, I can show you, I've never sped ever in my car in, you know, 25 years.
The logging though, that we're talking about is specifically tied to the, the amount of material coming in and going out. So as a measurement of the, what's happening on the site. So I think it's a little more, we should be able to tell more from the log. And it is kind of on the honor system as part of broader what we see, what neighbors see. But if multiple years in a row are successful, the idea was that there wouldn't, there shouldn't have to be so much more babysitting after that.
And I believe they, they have to keep track of that information reported to the state, I believe, for their reporting through the state already. So this isn't, this isn't really new information. They're already compiling that information to the state. Yeah. So the state's, you know, conducting its own thing every year too.
Please, I'm not picking on you. I'm not even thinking about you. I'm thinking about the three after you, and I'm playing a little devil's advocate here too. So, yeah, my concern is, you know, who here can tell the difference between 3,000 cubic versus 4,000?
Many times, and I said to him, tell me how much that is.
You get a drone and you take points on the pile and then you survey.
But, you know, I mean, listen, I mean, people are going to be honest. They're only, they're only honest when the cop's there, right? If the cop's not there, you're going to speed. Like, we're all going to, we all do it, right? So my concern is giving somebody a 10-year free pass and, oh yeah, well, they kept their logs up. Well, you know, I can show you, I've got a million dollars in my checkbook. That doesn't mean I actually have it.
Right. But I think with this instance, I don't think there's any other way.
Good.
Do you know what I mean? Like, there's no, there's a regulatory body of the state of Michigan that does not oversee tightly.
You don't think that every two years, we should have somebody go out and spot check them?
As a planning commission, we have the ability to say that, to do that, and that, that's included in number seven.
Okay.
And what I might counter you with is our zoning is set up today by the honor system.
Yeah.
And this is, I think, in fact stricter than, than what we, and then, you know, when Scott and I were brainstorming this, what? Couple of months ago, like it was this, this idea of like, hey, why can't we have them come back? And it wasn't just for this, but in general, like when we're doing these special uses, like how do we get tighter enforcement?
I, I witnessed this method being used a lot in Vol Township, and we had a conversation about that with some other things, not the specifically, but in general, that we don't do any, we don't hold anybody on special uses to an annual review until their training wheels come off, so to speak. And you realize, okay, this guy's, he's telling me this. Yeah, I believe that. I think that's what was there. And all their cars are painted red. That's what they said, you know? So whereas if they come back and, oh, no, you had two yellow cars. You said they'd all be red. He'd be like, yeah, you need another review. So, I mean, we, yeah, so that's kind of how this all started.
It's a good point that you made about the other ordinances around our system too, so that, yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, it is a complaint-based system for all intents and purposes.
And I guess if the neighbors aren't complaining.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
I mean, I do care, but really, if they're not complaining, if they're happy, I'm happy.
Right. If we, if we started inspecting everything, we would get to a point in 20 years, we would need seven inspectors on the payroll whole time.
Millions of dollars we have to find.
Think of how few people would be living in the township because they would be feeling like they were being watched like a hawk all the time.
Okay. Um, who, who was on the subcommittee? Forgive me.
Oh, I think I was.
All right. So would one or two of the four of you, if we approve this, go before the township board? I found that things get pushed through a little bit quicker if we have planning commission members that are there, based on the last time. Times that Ralph went in.
Could do that.
Is it? Somebody?
I don't care. I mean, unless somebody else wants to, but I know Scott will probably be the main, he was the chairman, so I'm assuming he'll be the main speaking, but I'm more than willing to go and support.
Thank you. I can't wait.
Calendar's aligned.
We, we won't be going completely blind because in full disclosure, Brian and I had a meeting with Grace and kind of briefed her on the theme report that you guys have as part of the meeting tonight. So we, we kind of brought her up to speed. So there's already some understanding there.
Trusty Nordhook will also be, in theory, sitting on this side of the table, so we'll have somebody on that, I have both sides, so.
Yeah, but then, then the kinking.
That's hopefully.
Would it be a good idea to have Wormies show up and do their presentation to the Gassie board? Because I mean, that.
I don't think it would hurt.
That, that.
I don't.
A lot of, and to send out that packet to them ahead of time.
I would ask legal counsel's advice on that because this ordinance is specific to a general broad, you know, not a specific person. And so by having that presentation specific to them, I think might be a conflict, but I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a conflict, but I, I do agree. I mean, we want to make sure that this ordinance is going to be of general applicability. It's not just intended to regulate them, although we have used a lot of, you know, guidance from what they do and what they, you know, what their proposed use is in order to kind of tailor our ordinance to, you know, incorporate what we need to be considering and incorporating, since this isn't a very common, you know, type of land use in most zoning ordinances, certainly not in a, you know, community like Cascade. So, um, you know, and I believe that this, that meeting was also recorded, if I'm not mistaken. So I would, I would certainly encourage other members of the board, the township board, to review that if it's available prior to, you know, their consideration of the ordinance, but I'm not sure it's necessary to have Wormies come back and do the presentation anew prior to or, you know, contemporaneously with them considering the ordinance.
So I will say, from my personal experience was when I first heard about this, I, I thought one way. Hey, then I got the material and I reviewed it, then I listened to the presentation and I thought a different way. And I got to tell you that of all the shaking heads up here, the township board is probably going to think the way we all thought. And they're not going to have the benefit of the material and the presentation to open their mind and think another way. And they've also, Home and Scott, they've also shown that they don't always take the direction of the committees.
That's true, but they do have the ability or staff would have the ability maybe to ask them to watch certain, if somebody could take a minute and see what's, which timeframes this, we asked questions of the state and that Wormies did their presentation of that recorded meeting. They could go on YouTube and watch those two segments of our meeting. They don't have to watch the whole thing all the way up to almost midnight. But, but just those two parts, you know, between hour and a half in and three hours in, and then from three and a half hours into four hours in or whatever it is, and extract what they want from there. I don't know that all of them would, but some of them would. I think some of them actually watched the meeting. Somebody told me they, that it was very grueling.
Well, they should probably look at that material too, because that helps a lot. That's just my thing. I mean, you got, do what you want. I just think it's, if you guys want to do this, I think it's got a better chance of getting the township on board. They were, if they become educated like we were.
Right. I just want to say one thing too, to what you said, I think, and I, I think, I know if I do go with Scott, this will be one of the things. It's just to let them know that we did, we did all disagree, I'd like to say, when we first heard.
Yeah, we came closer.
Yeah, but we also, we drafted this, we kept part of that negative state of mind to look at this to make sure that all of those negative things that we all kind of assumed when we first heard about this were not going to be allowed within Cascade with this ordinance that we put together. So I think that's important to realize that piece of it too.
Right. You, you should bring that up when we, when we talk to them.
I do think we all looked at the negative side.
We did. Yeah. What happened?
We've got one more. Yes. Trusty Nord.
So I think the township board cannot do all. So that's why we rely on committees to do a lot of this research and meet several times, dig into it, listen to presentations, make recommendations to this or this committee or this other's commission, and then the commission make them to the board. So I think there's a lot of value in how you guys present it to the board, just with your committee findings and your recommendations. So I just wanted to say that that's what we rely on.
In theory.
In theory, well, we, we have a lot of other things that we're doing too, that we can't, we can't dig into everything.
Yeah.
That's why we rely on you guys.
I almost don't want to ask that, but does anybody up here feel that we need to make any changes to the draft?
And by the way, we, just before, just the, the next step is we, we schedule a public hearing.
Correct.
And so we could, you know, we can make changes now. We could also make changes after the public hearing if we get information. So, Member, have you got a question?
Well, it was more about a change in regard to the email we received from the state. And in particular, I think, like as I mentioned, we went through this with a lens of how to be open-minded to this while not being so open that anything could happen. It wasn't a free-for-all, but not to be so restrictive that it couldn't happen. And I'm only concerned about number five in the email from the state regarding the negative variation. And it relates to number 10 in the draft here, where it says the facility must utilize negative aeration. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't replace that with facility must use aeration or other mitigating practices as like listed here to get around that order that seems to accomplish the same thing as what we had in mind in our conversations.
Did, did we require negative aeration in the industrial district too, or is that just in the farm?
Farm, be in all, zone all districts as currently written.
I think before I would agree, I think I would have to, like, I don't know, think about it a little bit. I think that, again, I know this email is from somebody from the state who reviews these across the boards, but I think I'd have to like think about it and do a little research on it just to understand fully what he's saying. Because I think that statement gives me lots of questions I would want to ask about that. That's my opinion. I think we had four meetings. We talked about all these things along the way and things were changed and molded along the way. Given time for everybody to do some research and to talk about them and to digest them a little. So I wouldn't fully say right now, I, I, I do think it would have been nice to maybe have this.
That's the greatness of the process. We, like, we, we can send this as is for public hearing and there's nothing.
Yeah, five million more things could come up.
Absolutely. But there's nothing that would prevent us from making that change that we don't have to do it right now.
Well, I think it's easier, my opinion, it's easier to loosen things or make an exception like we did with the fence earlier.
Yeah.
Than it is to tighten things or, you know, say, hey, you got to stop what you're doing four years down the road and go a different way. The other thing is next year, they may come up with a different technique that's even better than, right? Right. So, I mean.
That's under that one, though, that I'm thinking of making it open to the next best thing, instead of being so prescriptive that it has to be one technology. And I, I understand that all of this is not carved in a granite tablet, but that one in particular seems to be the one that's been called out as being particularly restrictive. And I think that it was simply by lack of not enough information on our part to say it had to be one thing without knowing that it could have been.
Well, I, I thought the advantage to the negative variation was that you could then put like a charcoal filter or something on the exhaust, if you will, to, to filter the odor out. Perhaps we should.
I will say too, just, I know it sounds very restrictive, but there is only one company that I know of even building this technology. He doesn't go on to say, at least my brief look at this, how many in the state maybe even use it currently or don't use it? I mean, you know, we don't even know how plausible, I guess, it is to.
Can we save this to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I do.
That would give you time to think about it.
I do like, anybody others, any other issues I would like to hear. I think we do need to hear.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to maybe ask somebody who might be a little more knowledgeable about this in the room?
We can, what I was saying, should we wait to the public hearing since we don't have a public hearing slated for this? So if there's somebody who has any opposing view, they weren't notified to.
See, I think it's better to leave it the way it is and have somebody come in and give an exception like the guy today with the facts, right? Convince me why you want to do it a different way.
That's a good point, too. We, yeah, I have not opposed, if, if you'd like to.
You have to come up to the microphone though and give your name and address.
Yeah, name and address.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate you all becoming experts on this. Yeah, for the point of negative variation.
Just name and address real quick.
Louis Chen, 5745 Whitneyville Avenue, Southeast. From the, for the point of the negative variation on composting, I think we need to specify for which step on the composting process, because it's pretty much impossible to say when you need to use negative aeration. So what does that mean for the whole farm, for all the piles that we have, for the raw material, for the, in my case, we want to use this technology for 21 days when the, the, the material is volatile. So that's when we want to use.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
And yeah, it makes it very restrictive for everyone else to require this, but I mean, it's fine with us.
Thank you.
Well, if you can do it, then others should be able to. Thank you. Well, if you can do it, then others should be able to.
Hello, Chandler Merschelski fifty seven forty five Whitneyville. Um, I just wanted to mention, we also have other technologies. Such as the EM technology, um, which is a known odor neutralizer and they use it in farm fields, um, and manure applications. And it's a brew of lactic acid bacteria and yeast and purple non sulfur bacteria and we can brew it ourselves that we do. And you spray it on something that stinks and it neutralizes it. You could even use it in like the litter box at home. It's a really, really cool product. So there are other options out there for sure.
Awesome, so please be pragmatic, but thank you. Right, again, I think, yeah, member Rowan makes a really good point. When somebody comes in for the special use permit, if they need something that's different.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I comment on some of, or some of the other points?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
So yeah, that one is, that was on my list. Um, and then I have a question or clarification on T ten. When we talk about the thousand cubic yards of inputs. So I'm not, seems like that's not, that's at, at one time, if I can ask Brian for clarification. Uh, that's a thousand cubic yards of raw material that we can have on site. At one time, so this means like food waste material that's volatile, right?
Correct, so yeah, number nine there, an operation may have a maximum of forty five hundred cubic yards of compost, composting intake, finished compost onsite at any one time. With no more than one thousand cubic yards being composting intake, which is then defined early in the chapter. So at any one time, there can be one thousand yards of intake material onsite.
With the other thirty five hundred being finished product.
Yeah, finished or maybe mixing product or, yep, other.
My comment there would be, can we have the wood chips not be considered in that one thousand? Since wood chips we use for various purposes, you know, for beautification of the farm. To do some other activities that are not related to composting and it's not volatile.
I'll say, and you guys can say if I'm wrong. I think when we talked about the one thousand cubic yards, we were concerned about food waste.
Right, and that's how Eagle has it, in, if you guys, I think you were mimicking Eagle.
Yeah, I think that that was what our intent was, so if we need a better definition, maybe.
Right, just excluding wood chips.
I think he's saying, I, if I understand the example correctly, that we're, we're defining composting intakes, but by listing wood chips, which also have another purpose. Besides composting intake, but it could be confusing with number nine.
Right, just wanted to make sure that it's not counted.
When you say wood chips, do you mean just a pile of wood chips or you mean the wood chips on the, the, uh, intake material?
A pile of woods.
Okay.
That you, that you may use for to mix or.
So would we exclude inventory?
I think we could clarify the definition of composting intake to exclude items that aren't actually going to be composted. Items that are being used for some sort of other purpose that might be wood chips or, you know, um. Uh, like, so lawn clippings is also included in that definition, you know, you, you, I suppose you could use lawn clippings for another purpose. That's more, um, you know, from a, um, beautification or some sort of, uh, you know, landscaping use. That's not, that, it's not being used for the composting itself. So I think we could clarify the language in that definition to exclude, uh, materials that may, could be composted. But are not going to actually be composted.
Right, and that takes me to the, another point that maybe Brian was gonna mention later is that we're gonna have a soil mixing. We have a soil mixing operation which is separate from composting, so for that we have. Other inputs that are not for the pur- purpose of composting, like we may have a pile of soil. That we're gonna mix with the compost that we made, but we have a pile of wood chips or composted wood chips. That are gonna be used for making soil blends, so we need to make sure that's not being counted on composting intake.
But if you have composted wood chips.
That's finished compost, which is, I think, kind of clear in the definition. It does talk about finished compost versus. We, we don't address mixing products.
We don't, we don't address soil in a pile either.
No, no.
Right?
Not currently.
So that would not be an issue. Your, your definition of wood chips, soil or is not included in that, you know, such things as soil and wood chips or not.
Soil, wood chips are just an inventoried item that he has.
Unstocked hosted wood chips.
Not intended, yeah, or not intending to be.
They're, they're not being regulated.
Right, right.
And that may require additional conversation because we don't intend to have another forty five hundred cubic yard pile of other things.
Other stuff.
So.
So maybe there needs to be a limitation on the inventory of other items.
Yeah, because.
In, in which case I would, I would be curious as to what you would, uh, think would be in. What you would anticipate having an inventory of soil and wood chips at your site.
Yeah, so for that operation, yeah, we're talking about another four thousand cubic yards of material. And we're talking about what type of material, cocoa core, peat moss, it may come in bales already covered. Or we, it may come naked. Um, this is material that is not gonna be volatile or cause any nuisance, but we need to make sure it's not counted in the composting operation.
Well, and should that material fall under the, was it a hundred and fifty feet from the property line and?
Yeah, exactly, and also that we are planning to, I'm, I'm sorry.
Now, in two hundred and fifty feet from a resident as well, right? Cause you've got your composting material that needs to be there, but you also have your. Your other material that probably should fall under that as well. I don't know. I mean, it doesn't smell, but still, if I were a neighbor, I would want it.
Kids love to play on big piles.
It's good points.
Yeah, so the plan for that, uh, email Brian was to have it under the thirty percent, uh, operational area. It all fits for us perfectly, but yeah, it's very restrictive for all their operations.
Yeah, and they can request a, yeah, absolutely.
Well, and I think if they were proposing something in the industrial district, we'd probably be more. Or lenient on.
Okay.
Open area.
Yeah, cause one of the, I think one of the main things too is goals, I guess, was to really look at the agricultural. Zoning for the actual composting wormy part of it in any commercial product. Where if you did get too big, where you are mixing huge products or making huge production of bagging stuff and selling it. Would be to move it out of the agriculture area into an industrial area was one of, one of our points, I think, when we were looking at this. Because you don't want something that seems industrial in agriculture area.
And, and number four specifically says, when located in the ARC or FP districts, the operational area is limited to thirty percent. So it, it's, that provision does not carry over to the industrial.
Right, and I think some of these limits we're talking about with quantity and piles of stuff and mixing product finishing stuff. I think we did on purpose because we don't want in an agricultural setting, a lot of this industrial type of. Mixing, bagging, sorting, selling, you know, that kind of packaging to transport out, having, you know. UPS or semis coming in to load up stuff, you know, to us, that's not so much an agricultural side that you want to happen every day. That would be moved to zoning. I mean, you guys can tell me.
And the reason why, um, we include this blending operation into our composting model. Is because it's an evaluated product that gives a very advantage. You know, we are using our composting to something that's gonna be more practical for the, for the end user, allow us to serve more compost in a change. Yeah.
Any other points?
Yeah, the last one would be, um, there's gonna be a section for educational purposes. So this section, we are, we would like to have all kinds of different composting systems in place. That people can mimic at home or at a school, bring groups of kids to like experience. Um, so this section may not have negative variation or, you know, this top technology. So.
I think that that really falls under the, the variance or something that you would apply, you know, to me, that sounds like a wonderful thing. I think that it's something that.
So perhaps.
People would support, but I don't think that would, you know, I think it would have to have a variance of some sort, so. It's something totally different that not everybody's gonna do, that would be strictly unique to your setting.
Yeah, exactly.
And so.
So you, you bring that up when you make an application.
You will submit an application for special use and when, when you do that, you can ask for variances once this is approved.
Okay.
And again, I think you hear some general support for, for all of the things that you're mentioning, right? This is really intended to be guidelines and, you know, if somebody wants to operate, they have to follow these guidelines. But, but this committee, uh, our commission has the ability to grant variances where, uh, needed, necessary.
I don't think variance is the correct term.
Perhaps it's not. Conditions, yeah.
Conditions on the, on the application.
Yeah, right.
And the last one of the last one, um, yeah, if I can, uh, in, i- if I would have the, have the opportunity to present at the township meeting. Then that would be great.
There'll be a public here, there'll be a public hearing first here, uh, which would be great to have you at. And then at the township meeting, there is a, a co- area for public comments, but you'll be limited to three minutes twice.
Okay.
But you should be there in case they have questions.
Absolutely.
To come up like you did now. I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, um. I don't think we have to formally do anything besides tell Brian to, to move forward. Is, is everybody, we don't even have to do a formal vote. Is everybody, is anybody that's not comfortable with that? All right, Brian, let's bring it to a public hearing.
Do we want it as is or do we wanna make some of the changes that were generally discussed tonight?
Would make the changes on the, the exceptions like soil and wood chips, but I would also put in there like. Composted wood chips is not part of that.
Yeah, right.
Like it's composted wood chips that falls under the composted.
So we can incorporate those changes, that'll be in the definition section.
Yeah, raw materials or inventory or something is not part of the.
As composting intake.
And I think we should put something in there as far as how much raw material can be on site at a time.
We wanna do that now or after we solicit public?
Yeah, I would probably defi- you know, I, I, I would defer probably to the wormies group, cause they're the ones that are way more knowledgeable than I am. But I mean, and no offense, but four thousandths, you know, of raw material, four thousand cubic, is it yards?
Yeah.
Of raw material. I mean, that seems like a lot to me, but I'm not, I mean, you know, now you got a four thousand foot pile of.
Four thousand foot?
Four thousand cubic. Of composting, four thousand cubic yards of raw material. Seems like a lot to me. Can we kick that can until we get to the public hearing and give the wormies team, uh, time to maybe research and come back with a recommendation so your subcommittee continues?
Possibility, I won't probably be here for the next meeting, just so you know.
I don't think the public hearing needs to be scheduled two weeks from now. I don't think it'll be ready.
Yeah, you have to do it at least fifteen days, so it can't be the next.
It would be the first July meeting would be the earliest we could do.
Thanks.
You're back on the.
No. Right, but, but it may be difficult for the subcommittee.
Okay.
I, we'll have to look at the calendar.
Yeah, we, we, we can, we can tell Brian to push it another two weeks too, so.
And then. If it's this last change and if it's just definitions, we could also do it via email and see if there's any feedback, suggestions.
Yeah, I don't know that we have to have a formal meeting. That'd be fine, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if you guys are.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, so moved. Let's see here, article nine, uh, I'll give a quick, uh, summary of this, so, um. It's just discussion of the airport, so we, we, we had, um, the last meeting, um, the tent thing. Uh, come through and it became apparent to a number of us that, um, you know, there, there was an opportunity, like. There's several sections to the airport and we have greater latitude to zone land use in certain areas that are not aeronautical. And also, um, there's some, some groundwater things that, that may or may not be of concern. One of them for me is that they have a well and they're irrigating, so they're bringing up water that they've contaminated and, and spraying. So, um, I, we, I had a meeting, Brian and I, with the supervisor and the manager. Um, and what they suggested is that perhaps we form a subcommittee. To look at both land use and groundwater, uh, concerns with the airport and come back to. Uh, the planning commission with any recommendations that we can, uh, from the zoning perspective and the groundwater. Uh, requirements that we can pass on, uh, to the board as a whole. So I, I'll open it up if there's any, any questions or any thoughts, uh, but that, you know, i- is what Ben, Grace, Brian and I kinda discussed, so.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Does anybody have any concerns?
So just to clarify what we're doing, that we're independent of any planned development, we're just proactively.
Looking at, yeah, looking at, and again, when you look at the zoning, you can kinda see that, like, there's like, there's even a map, right? And so really looking at the land use, the non aeronautical areas and what we might want to, um.
It's just a review essentially, because at some point in the past, the township said, you guys are on your own, we trust you with what's going on. You know, there's, there's few limitations, but they pretty much are on autopilot and we're just gonna review it and see if. They need to stay on autopilot or if maybe we need to have them come in front of us to have us review their site plans. I know, if they wanna build a building right now, they just build the building. I mean, it goes to the building department, but.
Right. Oh, if that's a desire, and I'm not suggesting that it should be, um, and, and the thought that, that, that I had, and again, it doesn't have to go this way. But would perhaps to have, uh, member Rissy chair it since his last subcommittee is, is ending. And he has a, a firm understanding of the groundwater issue. Uh, with, with some of the work that he did for his two decades on the River Association.
Thank you.
No, like when they put in that drain at the point, he was on that and then so like.
It almost sounded like a compliment in there, but it seems like a punishment.
By the way, I, 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 I've reached out to him ahead of this meeting and said, hey, I might suggest. I would not be doing it if he didn't, you know, say I would, but he doesn't have to be the one that does this, it's just, uh.
I said I would.
Yeah, but, but.
Real health, reluctantly, though, I don't.
There were several calls in fact, um, and a text, um, so. But d- does anybody else have a desire before, you know, we, we put that up to, to, to chair this, we'll start there. Chair, all right. Appreciate the support of my peers. All right, so I'll, I, I'll make the motion to form a, a subcommittee led by member Rissy to evaluate land use and groundwater. Uh, for the airport and bring best suggestions to the greater planning commission, uh, with three or more members. Selected by member Rissy or Chair Rissy of the subcommittee. My supporter, all right, so, uh, uh, the motion was made by me, Chris Nordike, supported by, uh, member Corshidge, all those in favor, say hi. Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes. All right, so if you are interested in serving on that subcommittee, uh, reach out to, uh, Chairman Rissy. And he will, uh, definitely be encouraged to have you on, I mean.
I would like to see at least three or four of you.
I, I will, I mean.
There we go.
And then we also should.
There we go.
Oh, all right, I got three, all right, I better start making a list. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, could you ask, uh, Member Engel, since he's not here, about this?
Yes.
To see if he wants to be part of that.
Yeah, I don't wanna have all the fun, I just was on to some committees, so if somebody else gets to fill my spot, I'll understand.
Oh, we'll make a spot for you.
I think it's, yeah, good, I, I appreciate it, I think this would be a, a good thing.
And it won't start until July, cause we gotta finish the.
There was a reason. Member Rissy may be going somewhere for two weeks, so. Okay, uh, thank you for that, we'll move on to article ten, old business, um, does the vice chair have a update for us on his subcommittee?
Uh, yeah, we think we're, uh, closing in on the end of the study. The, uh, Board of Trustees had asked that we complete the study by June thirtieth, or I think, uh. Quickly closing in on that now, we have a meeting, uh, this Wednesday, the eighth. And another meeting on the twenty second, uh, at which time I hope we can. Kind of formalize exactly how we wanna present this to, uh, the Board of Trustees. Uh, by their meeting on the thirtieth, I think, uh, Wednesday the thirtieth is when you expect to see it. Uh, basically, everybody's been participating in all the meetings, uh, Scott's taken great notes for us and. Scott's taken great notes for us and I try to, you know, respond. As quickly as possible and get those back out to the gang. I I will say this, at our last meeting, we had a representative. Brian Powell, I think is the fellow's name.
BSNA.
BSNA. Software. He did a great job of presenting exactly what they could do for us. Right now, Ben Swayze. Is soliciting a a bid from B BSNA. For doing that software work. Hopefully, we'll get that soon. That'll need to be presented to the Board of Trustees, the cost for the software. Uh, so they can make a decision on go ahead or not go ahead with this. I hope to be able to present the recommendations at the. June thirtieth meeting. I'm gonna be looking for one other person to help me out with that. Scott will not be available because he's gonna be making a little vacation trip. Uh, and he will not be available on June twenty second either, I believe.
I'll have to check my calendar.
Okay.
I can help you with that, Ralph. You're talking about the to the township?
Presentation to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, I was probably gonna come anyways.
Appreciate that.
Just a question, the software you're talking about, and I you don't need to go in depth at all. I'm just wondering, did you feel by the presentation that it would help? It would have helped some of the issues that came up? Did it identify some of those things and would have helped?
Yeah, just by recording things and, you know, when, you know, certain feedback from the developers is expected. Ben Rappin was there and, you know, listened carefully to what was going on and. You know, I think it's the right right product for what we're looking for now. On Wednesday, Brian Wilson from the Building Inspection Department is gonna come in and talk about how they use the BSNA software.
Nice.
And that'll give some direct feedback from a first aid official on this. And he, you know, I'll just ask him, is there anything you would change? You know? And I think overall, the software will greatly help our planning department, you know. Better approach. The the developers in this area.
So I just wondered.
Can I make a quick comment? You know, we look at at purchasing different software at work and one of the things that's become very apparent to me is that the larger companies do a really good job of. Of constantly modifying their model, right, or their product. And BSNA has a pretty large footprint in Michigan. And they're working with a lot of communities, municipalities, and so they take in all that information that every municipality has and then. With their updates, they're constantly improving their product offering, right? Which which we would get the benefit from as time moves on. It sounds like from the presentation that. The planning end event. Is not very widely used and it sounds like it's a pretty new rollout, so. My guess is that in the coming, you know, five years or ten years out, this this is only going to be improving. As more and more people like ourselves. If if we were to move forward with it, if we signed up and we started using it. We're gonna provide feedback and they'll tweak the little things that, you know, Brian says, hey, this is really dumb, you know, this should go this way and they would. They would make those changes. Whereas if you went with a smaller software that's not as well used. You're, they don't have the financial backing to to put that into it.
Ralph, that brings up an interesting point. We should put a bug in their ear saying, listen, you know. We're willing to be your beta tester or guinea pig on some new. Changes or developments or do maybe some code development because I'm sure we're gonna be asking for things that everybody else.
And we would appreciate a discount in relation to that.
They get the upgrade for free. Because they help.
Isn't it a SaaS solution, though?
I thought. Not presently.
It is not.
They're moving towards it, but it's currently on prem. And like any off the shelf software, it's not a hundred percent what we want, but this one was probably seventy five to eighty percent. And even in the areas where it fell short, there were workarounds that I think would still meet the needs. The purchase of this as an added module is something we already own. Everything's moving, their product included, SaaS.
Yeah, I'm surprised. It's such a perpetual use license.
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, he said that that was the last time.
Right, this will be the last.
The last time the township could do that. Current server dies, they will be forced to. Step up to the. There's advantages certainly to that, as Member Roland knows. I'd make sure that Member Rappin is part of the negotiations. He's never squeezed a software vendor, I'm sure.
He was front center.
Yeah, I definitely would.
Because I'm the one usually on the other side getting squeezed, so I can tell you.
We know your merchants.
Between the two of you, you're in good hands.
Question from for Brian Hillbrunt. Do you know if Bennett's reached out to BSNA for quote?
I haven't seen any numbers, so I'll double check that.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure he's. You know, following through and.
Yeah.
Asking them to give us a quote.
Awesome. Hey, just a quick call to both subcommittees. I see the agendas and like, you know, Ralph's running thirteen to eighteen article meetings. And it's just pretty darn impressive and and the subcommittee and the wormies too, the level of detail, so. Thank you all for for doing that. It's just a, you know, this is the first, you know, real year we had the first subcommittee, but like. That we're doing subcommittees and it's it's a lot of extra work and. You know, everybody's going above and beyond, so, uh, thank you for that.
There's a lot to do.
Yeah. Good stuff. Does anybody else have any other old business? Brian, what are we looking at for the calendar? We've got two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, which.
It's light.
It is light, yeah. And then July, July four is the first Monday, so it'd be July eleven and nineteen or July eleven and eighteen, the second and third.
So if it is lightly, we haven't, we have two consecutive meetings in a row.
In July.
Just putting that out there, so. Does anybody else have anything?
I'll just note that this is Madison, our new zoning administrator. So she's been here for, I think this is the third week now. But so she's gonna be helping out a lot and already has been helping out a lot in the planning department, helping with some. Zoning and code enforcement and zoning questions that come up. So excited to have her on the team and I'm sure you'll be seeing her at some more meetings.
Awesome.
Resident complaints.
Article eleven, any other business, um, or trustee Nordhook, anything from the board that's coming up or anything we should know about?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Well, you don't wanna know.
A smile indicates something.
Lovely.
Does anybody else have any other business?
Another one is your resident tech and security guy. Brian and I have been talking about our emails and our passwords more specifically, I think by.
They're static.
By a matter of policy, I don't think we're allowed to update our passwords yet, so I have a a call into our support folks. But would just highly encourage everybody once we get that resolved to set your own password for your email.
I would highly recommend that you don't maybe do it every ninety days.
Okay, just as long as they don't all have the same password.
Maybe some two factor. Yeah, some kind of authenticator. All right. Does anybody else have any other business? Uh, thank you so much for coming in as well. Uh, didn't have a ton, so, but appreciated having you here just in case, so.
Absolutely, happy to be here. Thanks, everyone.
Awesome, and thank you for coming in as well. All right, uh, does we have any other visitors that wish to speak? Yes, come forward. Yeah, if you could just come speak to the mic so that we get it in the minutes. And again, identify yourself very quickly.
Louis Chen, we wormies fifty seven four five Whitneyville.
Yes.
Uh, we did, we do have a final question. Looking at the timeline. So, um, we last time we talked about needing to feed the worms. So, uh, is there any chance we could bring some material? In the meantime, to feed the worms.
So I'm working on that with our attorney, how that relates to the cease and desist letter and where we might have room to allow that, so. I'm expecting a letter from them pretty soon. I will run that by Ben Swayze for sure, but I'll I'll keep in touch about that.
Please work directly with Brian on that. He's gonna be a lot quicker than waiting for these meetings.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have a timeline? Is it? Uh, the hard, you know, deadline when you need it or it's just coming up pretty soon?
Yeah, no, it's just a matter of losing, losing, losing right now, so I wanna look at your timeline.
How much material do you need, I mean, you think?
Uh, so let's say we had five million worms. Now we probably have.
No, I mean, how much material would you need to feed them? Like?
Yeah, when I emailed Brian, I mentioned ten cubic yards.
Ten cubic yards?
A month.
Can you finish what you said? You said you had five million.
Yeah, five millions as the hair that we had when we moved in, so you know, since we stopped feeding them, they just decreased, decreased, decreased.
How many do you have left? What's your estimate? How many worms you have left?
Probably about two million.
So timing is.
For for the record, I mean, I'm okay if he didn't ten cubic yards to keep.
Yeah, I defer to Brian and the attorney since.
It was one of our concerns as well, but it was a legal thing that had to go through the attorneys.
Brian, see if you can put some heat on. I mean, no, seriously, I mean.
We got livestock dying.
He's lost more than half his inventory, so. And that was a concern, I think, during, I think our understanding from when you spoke before was that you had. Three or four months or six months before they would start.
Yeah, it's just that they decreased. Yeah, the point there was, okay, when am I gonna lose all my all my worms?
No, well, and we took it, we thought that meant none were dying in this.
Yeah.
I appreciate you letting us know the urgency of the matter.
Thank you.
And. Staff is gonna work on it as quickly as they can.
Appreciate it.
And have your food standing by.
The the manager has wide discretion here, so he can definitely do that. Do we have anybody, Jessica, on the line? We do.
It was one comment. Uh, they said it was James Yost bulking agents like woodchips or dry leaves.
So he, I think he's really talking about the definition. Those are called bulky products at the end. Our vocabulary is growing.
Know you'd be a wormy expert.
You just wait till next fall.
Actually, does anybody, any other visitors or any, I don't think so. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Member Rissy or supported by Member Rappin. You want to shore on?